All right, we're gonna call, we're gonna call commission order. We got a long, healthy agenda today, so.
I've only got an hour.
Then you're leaving in the middle. Minutes and reports received and filed, Betty?
I'm on my due, I have, um, my report, the county clerks and the treasurer's monthly meetings filed with us.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Committee Liaison reports announcements of upcoming meetings and events. We do have the radio, monthly radio show tomorrow. When do you guys want to do that?
I can do it tomorrow.
Capita Region Outreach meeting tomorrow.
All right.
Could I go to that?
Then I will, um, I will let Crutch know that you'll be on the show.
residential services.
Today?
This afternoon.
Yeah, I'm not able to make that.
Why do they do that in the evening, like during your season? Don't they think about that? My mic's out on, I can say what I want to now.
We can all hear it. Third quarter city-county economic development update is next Tuesday. And do we have an agenda on the 16th?
Should.
Yes.
Somehow I don't have it on my calendar. I'm having issues with my email, my county email. I don't think I'm getting things. Okay, first item on the agenda is discussion of health insurance renewal. Randy, Joe, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mark. Chris and Jeff, we appreciate the chance to come up and walk through where we are with the renewal on the county's health insurance. And unfortunately, this is not a good meeting from a renewal perspective. And we talked about it a few weeks ago when we were up with what's happening with healthcare reform, the pressure on the carriers and the industry with several mandates and taxes that lead into what's becoming a trend with significantly higher increases for most businesses. Inside the green folder, we put together an agenda. And on that agenda, there's quite a few things there. We'll move through it for the sake of time fairly quickly, but obviously drilling down to any place the commission would want to. On the left side of the folder is your fully insured information. Just as a reminder, we're currently fully insured. The county's been fully insured for several years now, going back probably 10 years ago. The county was partial self-funded then, and is fully insured, was more competitive at that time. You go through Evin flows with carriers and funding methods, chose to go fully insured and have been that way. We are gonna end up talking about partial self-funding as an option as we get into the other side of the packet. So on the left-hand side of the packet is the fully insured information. First thing is your renewal spreadsheet. And if you look at that, the United Healthcare, we currently have two plans with United Healthcare, so we're offering a dual choice. One is a higher deductible qualified health plan, allowed to offer a health savings account with it. And the other one is a traditional plan, which is a $1,000 deductible with office copays, prescription drug card copayments. And when you look at the numbers at the bottom, again, this is not a fun meeting to have to present this, but you're looking at the current rate of 46709. The renewal of that would be 60842, which is roughly a 30% increase, 29.61. The plan next to that is the lower costing, high deductible HSA plan. In the past, the county has put in the difference from the employee rate. So the county has funded the employee rate in whole in the past, the 46709. And then if an employee chose the high deductible HSA, they put in the differential in that into the health savings account. So you can see what it's going up to as well.
So it, make sure I understand this, Randy. If it's going from 383 to 487 for an employee only?
That's correct.
Is that how to read that?
That's correct. And that, that's of course on the one option. And just to the left of that, in the, in the green numbers there, we give you your current enrolled census, which is your employee only. And you can see that on the traditional plan, there's 164 employees. And again, we call it the traditional plan. It's more of a deductible copayments, coinsurance. But it has office copayments up front and prescription drug card copayments up front. And then there's 54 employees that are on the high deductible HSA. And then the appropriate family makeup below that on the four-tier family structure. There's not a lot of families on the health plan, which we really see that trend due to dual income families. A lot of times spouses have other, other coverage. The biggest area that we do have coverage currently is on employee children. There's 41 employees that have children on the traditional plan. The number, in the history, as we've worked with the county, looking at the market, your first reaction is to go out and of course get other bids from the vendors, the carriers. As we talked about the last meeting, we're seeing a shrinking market. You all are with United Healthcare, which is of course is one of the main players in the United States. Coventry is a little bit more of a regional player. They're in the middle of being purchased by Aetna. And Coventry and Aetna only release one quote because they're merging. So basically their proposal is also speaking on behalf of Aetna. And then Anthem, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, who we've been with before. We also looked at Cigna, who declined to quote. But when you round out those carriers, those are the major carriers pretty well across the US. You do get into regional carriers, like in Springfield, Missouri. Cox Hospital has their own medical plan. But for you all here, the three main carriers are the three that are listed there. You can see as we sent the underwriting information, which is your claims history to those carriers, there's no carrier that's offering any rate relief from where United Healthcare is. And we can come, I want to get to the second page too and talk about some decrements with plan changes, but any initial questions concerning the renewal or the other carriers. The page right behind that, typically you try to leverage your renewal a couple ways. One, you go to the market. If you have a more competitive carrier, you look towards going with them, or you leverage their renewal against the incumbent without having any relief from the market. We don't have a lot of leverage to go back to United to push them lower and/or just simply change carriers. So once, once you know where your rate is from the renewal perspective, the other thing you can do is of course, lower or raise, if you will, deductibles, coinsurance and so forth. And that puts more pressure on the user, the member. It does lower the premium, but just, when you, and we can run a lot of these options, but the main point I wanted to make, when you look at these different plan features, as an example, the first one listed there, emergency room, urgent care copayments. We're currently on a $200 urgent care, excuse me, a $200 emergency room and a $50 urgent care. If you raise that to a 250, 75, just on the alternative column listed there, you know, it saves you about, you know, five basis points, basically. Right below that, if you raise deductibles, if we went from a $1,000 deductible to a $1,500 deductible, it saves you just over one, a half of a percent. So when you look at making changes, which is an option, it doesn't affect the plans that much. So if we, if we implemented all of these changes, we're talking a few percentage, you know, a couple percentage points, and you're going in and changing deductibles and so forth. And, and there's, there's times you have to do that, but there's, when you have this large of an increase, changing a few things on copayments and deductibles is not gonna warrant a lot of Looking at the claims history, and we'll hit on this, and we want to get to talking about partial self-funding. But the page right behind that is the premium versus claims report. They also put into this what they call IBNR, which is incurred but not reported claims. So they know that if, if, at any point, if an employer leaves fully insured, and this is a good place to talk about this, if the county would leave fully insured 12/31 of this year and go to partial self-funding, all the claims that have been incurred during this year, because you were fully insured, United's going to pay those claims. If they're eligible claims and, you know, are covered under the policy, United Healthcare is going to pay those claims. So even if Randy went in in November and had a claim November 15th, if it's not turned into the carrier until March 1st, it's still gonna be paid by United. So that's what they talk about, it's incurred but not reported. They know that any time that they run a claims report, there's still claims out there that have not been turned in and paid yet for that period. So when you look at the claims report, and you go down to where the gray boxes are, the first set of numbers on the gray boxes, and go to the right, the second numbers from the far right, where it's actually, it's under the claims to premium ratio. The current period, we're at 94.2, the prior period 98.6. So we've been running, you know, just under 100% of incurred but not reported claims. So for every dollar we're paying in, they're paying out almost that dollar back out in claims, not counting their cost of doing business, the different things that the fully insured carrier has as far as the cost on top of that. Right behind that, which these couple pages are important as we talk about partial self-funding, is a breakout of your claims on the exact payments made for these, for these dates. So this does not include incurred but not reported, but it does show your claimants. And as you look at these, for the first reporting period, which is through July of '13 going backwards one year, so the first page is the most recent 12 months from July going backwards, we had a total payment of $1,585,000, just rounding that off. And that does represent your medical and pharmacy payments, okay? Doesn't take into account cost of doing business from United and so forth. And it doesn't take into account your incurred but not reported. But out of that, if you look down towards the bottom of that, you get into the higher claimants. And they rank those at every 25,000 increment. The point we wanted to make is, if you look at partial self-funding, which we're gonna talk about in a moment, you purchase a specific deductible to cover claims over a specific amount. So just like as an analogy, when you buy car insurance and you decide you're gonna buy a $500 deductible on that automobile, there's a premium for that. If you raise the deductible from 500 to 750, there's a premium savings for that. Same thing when we look at partial self-funding in a moment. The higher the deductible that you purchase, it lowers your premiums you're paying for reinsurance. But the question is, what's the history the county been on high claimants? Well, when you look at the current year, there's three claimants that have been over 75,000. And we've done the math and basically typed that out for you there. So we have three claimants over 75,000. The total, I'm just gonna round off numbers here, the 438,000. So in that instance, if we were partial self-funded, the county would have paid the first 75,000 of those claims, which would have been 225,000. And the stop-loss carrier would have paid the difference, the amount over that, which is the 213,000. If you take that into consideration, on the claims that were paid, the 1,585,000, if you take the 213 off of that, it gets your claims paid, if we were partial self-funded at that time, down to 1,371,000. There's still some additional fixed costs that you'll see in a moment with partial self-funding, because you have to have someone, a third-party administrator set up to pay the claims. You have your reinsurance cost. But this is important when we possibly look at partial self-funding, to give you an idea of what, how you ran with the claims historically. The year before that is also listed. And on a group your size, it does get to where you're creditable. You all have, besides just the employees that you cover, you cover families. So you have a lot of covered members. And if you look at the page right after that, kind of running through the same math, I won't read through the whole statement at the bottom. But ironically, you also had three, three members, could be an employer or dependent, three members that also went over 75,000 during that period. And if you go through the math, you'll see that the adjusted claims would have been 1,290,000. So basically, almost at that 1.3 million again. So for the past couple years, you've had three claimants that have went over the 75,000. And your claims then have ran about 1.3 million for those two periods.
How much do we pay in premium?
Premium, last year, uh, last year you paid 1,400, or excuse me, 1,871,000.
And that includes the premiums the county paid, plus the premiums employees paid on top of it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And that's the same time period, comparing apples to apples?
It is. This, we're giving you an annualized period here. Your claims, we don't have your, what we're giving you on the, on the premium mark is your calendar year of this year, because you're on a calendar year basis. We of course don't have your claims through the years, or we're pulling claims as close as we can. But it's, it's relative if you don't.
So we, our premium was 1,800, a little more than 1,800, almost 1,900?
Yep.
Almost 1,900. And our payments were only 1,600.
Right.
That's a 30%, or that's a, maybe 15% margin. And yet, the margin shows it's only 90, it's only 6%.
Well, the incurred, that doesn't include. So the difference between these two reports is, the first report, this one, is the incurred but not reported. So looking at those numbers, we had.
And this, this is actually paid?
That, that's, yeah. That's your incurred but not reported. They're factoring in, there's claims out there that haven't, so, so when you look, when you look at United, looking at those numbers, for the current period, they paid out 1,726,000. The county paid in 1,871,000. So that, that gets you close to that, you know, you're just under that 100% amount. That doesn't take into their cost of doing business and so forth. So any carrier, not just United, is gonna be looking at this account saying, you know, we've gotta bump, bump the premium. Question is, no one has the crystal ball on what next year's claims are gonna hold. So we try to look backwards to see what your trend has been. Last year, we looked at partial self-funding, but the, the attachment factor, which I'll explain when we get to that in a minute, was about 400,000 higher than your 1.8 million that we paid in. So when we looked at partial self-funding last year, the whole concept of partial self-funding gives you a lot more flexibility and management of your plan. But when it's that much of a difference, it's hard to take on that liability when you look at where we were with claims. So we'll jump to that piece of it on the, on the right side. But any other questions on fully insured before we jump to partial self-funding? We of course come back to this.
Good.
Okay. On the right-hand side, when you, and just to talk a little bit about the difference between fully insured and partial self-funding. When you're fully insured, you're obviously giving all the money to the insurance company. They're taking all the risk. They're paying claims outside of what your employees, employees pay out of their deductibles and so forth. But you really don't see where all those dollars go. It's going to the carrier. Each year you have a renewal or a true-up. They come out and give you an increase generally. We try to beat the market down. And you almost, what you do in the fully insured market is almost chase premium. And not that you want to change every year, but every two, three years, you know, you're chasing premium, trying to find the best premium for the dollar spent. When you leave that funding method and possibly go to partial self-funding, the first page you're gonna see here is, has the 50,000 highlighted. This is what a partial self-funded financial overview would look like. And you'll see that we break apart all the pieces. And I'm just gonna use the one on the right. We've got, basically what we've done, we have three different carriers, if you will, that we're marketing your partial self-funded plan to. And I'll hit the, I'll hit the bold print at the top there. UMR is a third-party administrator that's owned by United Healthcare. So one thing about that plan, we would actually stay with the same network we have today. But as we, as we get to the numbers, they're a little bit high on their numbers. So there's a little bit more work we need to do there. MedPay is also a third-party administrator out of Springfield that we do some, do other business with. And then CoreSource is a third-party administrator out of Kansas City. And we actually have Capital Region Hospital insured with them here. So those are third-party administrators. Right below that, the provider networks, as I mentioned with UMR, they use United Healthcare. So the question is, you know, does that network give us a deeper discount? Then another rentable network is HealthLink. HealthLink is actually owned by Blue Cross and Blue Shield, but it's their rentable network. So we use HealthLink for a lot of the larger self-funded clients. Missouri Department of Conservation is an example, uses HealthLink. We use it for Capital Region, just as a couple examples. When you move then below those, you get into your specific reinsurance policies. And I won't keep going back and forth between all three, but I wanted to explain why there's three columns. So if we'll just focus on the column on the right, just as an example. When we go out, you break apart the pieces, and we know that you're not large enough to be totally self-funded. A totally self-funded employer would be like Ford Motor Company, Coca-Cola, to where they're, they're buying, they're, they're setting up an administrator to administer their plan, but they're writing checks for any and all claims that come through. And they're so large, they're not needing to go buy reinsurance. The county, obviously, we can't take on that exposure. So we want to look at what exposure are we comfortable with. So what we've done is price you a 1215 contract with a $50,000 deductible. And we have a second sheet we'll get to, which is a $75,000 deductible. And again, I'll hit this high level. This can get a little confusing. We can come back to it. And if there's interest from today, we obviously need to get with Debbie and meet with these vendors. But the first thing is a contract. Because we're coming off of fully insured, and in my example, United's gonna continue to pay those claims when we leave United fully insured, because you've already prepaid them. But when you buy a reinsurance contract, you need to actually purchase it for, for a period of time. Well, we don't have to back up into the current year because you're fully insured. So this contract would cover you for all claims that are incurred in a 12-month period going forward. So for the full year of 2014, it will cover any claim incurred during 2014, as long as it's reported and paid within a 15-month period, which gets you through to January, February and March. So if Randy had a claim December 22nd, it was covered during the policy year, the calendar year. It was paid by March, the end of March. It's gonna count towards your, your stop-loss policy, towards that 50,000, okay? So what you're purchasing on this con, the, the specific reinsurance, you're asking that carrier to basically give you reinsurance for any claim, for any member, whether it's an employee, dependent, once that member's had $50,000 in expenses, okay? Once, once your plan has been asked to pay 50,000. So if Randy had a $250,000 claim, I'm gonna pay my deductibles, coinsurance, but the bulk of that claim's gonna be owed currently by a fully insured carrier. Well, if you're partial self-funded, it would be owed by the county, and that's where you buy reinsurance. So in that example, my $250,000 claim, after I paid my part of it as an uncovered member, the county would pay, not the whole claim, they would just pay up to 50,000. And then your reinsurance carrier would step in and pay that difference above that. So of course, there's no free lunch. You're gonna pay a premium for that policy, which we'll get into.
Randy, can you explain what the 1215 contract means?
Okay, the 1215 contract, we, the good news is, we're coming off of fully insured. So we don't have to worry about backing up into 2013. So if we went partial self-funded, we would start to purchase reinsurance January 1 of 2014. That reinsurance is, we want it to cover us for the full calendar year, so January through December. And you could actually buy a 1212 policy to where it stops there. But the problem is, if you have a claim, no, my example of a claim November 15th, it's not turned in until February.
Right.
Well, it wouldn't be covered under that policy.
Okay.
So by having the extra three months there, it allows three months of claims to be ran out and paid and still go to that policy.
Okay.
So in my example, Chris, good question. Let's say I had that $250,000 claim in July, and you, you had paid that, you're, you know, everything on that claim had been paid. The county paid their full 50,000. The reinsurance company paid everything else. Well, if you didn't have that three months added on, and I had another claim come in from my, my November, November claim not paid till February, well, you would end up having to pay on that claim again, because it wouldn't fall under that contract and under my 50,000. So the, as we would renew the next year, partial self-funded, we would simply renew on a 1215 contract again. So it really gives the county some run-out protection. If we ever wanted to leave partial self-funding, we've got some run-out protection on a large claim that you've got stop-loss coverage. So let's say we did this for three years. For whatever reason, we wanted to go back to fully insured. If you're on a 1215, it gives you coverage for those claims that might be coming in after the first of the year.
And in this example, it's 50,000 per person?
50,000 per covered person.
Yeah.
Correct. And just to hit on the, then the fixed cost. When you break, the nice thing about partial self-funding, from a financial standpoint, it's very transparent. So you don't just get an increase and not a whole lot of information about where all the dollars are going. You see exactly where your dollars are going. So the third-party administrator is gonna range from, you can see that UMR is 4757, which looks very high, but, but they actually include some of their network charges in that. But they're, they're a carrier. So if you're with United, you're gonna pay a higher price tag for their administrative services, because they're a lot bigger operation, more overhead than a smaller third-party administrator. And then you can see where MedPay and CoreSource is. So again, just using CoreSource as an example, they're at 1395 per, these are PEPM, which stands for per employee, per employee per month. So that 1395 is a, is an amount that's paid for every employee that's covered per month, whether they're individual or family. Then you have a network access fee. We know when we have a claim, we want to make sure that it's a discounted claim. Well, currently, we're with United on a fully insured basis, and it's part of our premium we're paying. Well, if we break this out, that's where we would use HealthLink. And when someone went in and went to St. Mary's or Capital Region or whatever, you know, you're not gonna get billed for that full retail cost. You're gonna get a discount, a discount on that claim. You and the employee. So there's a network access fee. The broker advisor fee, we would recommend going to a fee-based arrangement with the county. Currently, on fully insured, we're paid a percentage of, of premium, which is pretty traditional on fully insured. This would be fee-based, which we like, because as you would get an increase in premiums for reinsurance, we're not getting an increase. If we feel a increase in fees is warranted, it would be a discussion with the commission. The utilization review and pre-certification is included in all of these. At no additional fee, it's built into the rates here. But it does cover the cost of, if you have a large claimant, the pre-certification, the large case management. So those, sometimes those are a fee broken out, but they're included with the network charges here. Then you get into your reinsurance cost. The first one listed there is the aggregate premium. And just again, to use CoreSource, that $4.24 is purchasing an umbrella reinsurance policy. So this doesn't have anything to do with the 50,000. This has, this is basically purchasing an umbrella for your whole members that are covered. And when you drop down and look at the very bottom number on the right, the 2,394,000, and you go just above that, that 1,784,000 that's in bold, what you're, what you're doing is paying $4.24 per employee per month for an insurance policy that gives you a ceiling based on this census of the 1,784,000. You don't have to purchase aggregate coverage, but the risk you run if you don't is if every single member had a $50,000 claim, you would be paying the first 50 of every single person covered by the county, employees, dependents. So this gives you more of a feel of fully insured, because you, you're, you're gonna protect yourself at the specific level on any claim up to 50, but you're gonna protect yourself globally by buying aggregate protection. Okay? Let me stop with that, and then we'll get into the specific rates. But I know I'm throwing a lot at you here, but initial question?
Are these set up as HSAs?
Uh, you're, great question, Mark. The plan design, we can set up your plan exactly like it is. The reinsurance carrier, it's not gonna make really a factor whether you have a $1,000 deductible or 1,500, or if it's an HSA. The premiums they're charging for this 50,000, they know they're not gonna be paying a claim until it gets into a big claim. So really, it's a matter of the county, what plan design do you all want? If you want to keep it relatively the same, if you want to make changes. The nice thing going forward, we're gonna have a lot more detailed claim information, which can help, all of us help you manage the plan better, because we'll be able to see exactly where these dollars are going. We would also break out pharmacy here. So another question in plan development is, if we would go this direction, do we want to keep the benefits very similar to what they are today? Do we want to make changes, as in raising copayments, deductibles, that type of thing? And in this, a good analogy with that, it's a good, good question, is right now, if you raise the deductible, you of course get a little bit of a premium savings, but United, you know, is the one taking on that risk. You know, there's more exposure to the employee. They have to pay maybe 1,500 instead of 1,000 on the deductible. For the county, you become the payer on these claims up to your specific deductible amounts. So over time, you do want to have a fair balance between what you all are paying and what the employee's paying, because, you know, over, if you wouldn't raise deductibles over time, with medical costs continuing to go up, you know, that, the county's taking on more and more liability, because you're paying the claims up to the first 50,000.
What's, do we have some utilization rates on PPO versus HSA? I mean, I know how many, we have a lot more people in the PPO.
Right.
Is the per-member cost per PPO of actual incurred benefits?
Higher.
Much higher?
It, we can, we can go back to United and try to get the breakout. It's going to be higher. One, you've got so many more people.
So if we migrate to self-funded, does it make sense to get rid of a PPO and go to straight HSA? Because it has a, I mean, it's a much better, HSA is a better program.
It is.
I mean, PPO is a terrible program. It fosters everything that's wrong with the healthcare system. The HSA does the right thing. It makes people take responsibility for their own healthcare decisions.
Right. The, I mean, we're, we're a big proponent of HSAs. I mean, our office is an example. We're on HSAs. A big difference between our size of 40 people in the county. Most plans offer a dual option. You don't have to do that. One of the reasons is, a lot of employees are not eligible to put money in the HSA. They can be on the high deductible plan, but if they have secondary coverage through a spouse, military, if they're on Medicare, so if it's a older employee working for the county over 65 that has Medicare, your plan's still primary for them. But because they have secondary coverage, they can't put money in an HSA. So the HSA won't, the, the health savings account option to put money in it will not work for every single employee if some of those have secondary coverage. Maybe they're covered by their spouse's plan, you know, the, if my wife works elsewhere and the, the children on that plan, and I'm covered too, because it was the same cost as a family, I can be on a high deductible plan, but I cannot put money into health savings account.
As long as you're actually covered.
As long as I'm actually covered. So.
So for example, if your spouse's, if your wife's healthcare plan says they will not cover you if you have other insurance? cover you if you have other insurance?
Correct.
Then that doesn't apply.
Yeah, if I'm not on other coverage, then I can put money in an HSA. So that brings up a very good point. I mean, if we look at partial self-funding.
What about HRAs?
HRA, if you look at partial self-funding, you're really moving full forward. An HRA is where you would, you buy a fully insured product from a carrier, and we would go from, I'm just going to use an example, we would go from a $1,000 deductible, let's say to a $5,000 with United Healthcare. Your rates are going to go down a little bit, but as.
But not enough?
Not to take on the exposure, because you'd be looking at, if you all were going to self-fund at $4,000.
Right.
You'd be paying $4,000 for every covered member, you wouldn't save enough in premium to offset the exposure. But there's a lot more to do behind the scenes with your plan design on the plan you would keep going forward at the employee level. What is your plan of benefits? So if we move forward with the decision from financially, the concept of partial self-funding, if you like that, you know, there's some work to do to work towards, you know, finalizing that.
Randy, on the, so on this page where you've got CoreSource there to the right.
Yes.
And you've got estimated total max funding cost. Now, does that include, does that take into account the $50,000? And how are you, are you coming up with a number? I mean, is that $50,000 something that we would have to?
Good, great question. So what you have, and let me explain the specific rates, and it'll kind of come together. Back up under the fixed cost, kind of right in the middle below the aggregate premium, that 424, we're letting you know that this policy covers medical and pharmacy, and the rate's right below that for specific employee only, and then spouse, children, and family, that's the actual insurance policy rate that you're paying to purchase that $50,000 policy. So it becomes a fixed cost, it's a fixed cost that you're paying. When you add all of those charges up for all those fixed costs, it's based on this current census we're using up in the top left up there, it's 609,000, let's call it 610,000. So that's a fixed cost. Below, again, you wouldn't have to purchase the ceiling coverage below that, but kind of to your point, Chris, if you didn't purchase the coverage below it that I'm going to get into next, you all would basically be only paying out $610,000, and the rest of the monies would go into your bank account that you would have given to United, but you would basically be saying, we're paying all claims of any member up to 50. And then over 50, the reinsurance carrier kicks in. So Randy's $250,000 claim, you just pay the first 50, the other 200,000's paid. So most employers, especially starting with partial self-funding, are like, well, what's our budget amount, which is kind of what you're getting to, you know, if we had $50,000, if every single member, employee, spouse, children, had a $50,000 claim, which is not going to happen, but if it did, I mean, it would be an astronomical amount.
Sure.
So you purchase aggregate coverage, which gets you to the budget number I think you're alluding to, and that's where the next set of numbers, the aggregate, you're still buying a 1215 contract, you're paying that $4.24 per employee per month for that, and it buys you basically a benefit that covers medical and pharmacy, it's a million-dollar insurance policy, and they give you factors. These factors listed there, the employee-only factor of like 428, 29, that, we're basically going to a reinsurance actuary and saying, this group wants a ceiling. They want a ceiling to when they hit that, they don't have to pay any more in claims. What is that ceiling? So they look at your claims, they come up with their estimated amount, they actually add a 25% corridor to that, so this is inflated. It's very unusual that an employer would hit this maximum, less than 2% of the companies in the United States have what we call an aggregate claim on an annual basis. But by purchasing that coverage and paying the 424 per month, they're telling you that they're going to give you a top-end ceiling of $1,784,000. So with that, if you add that plus your fixed cost, the 609, that gets you to your bottom-line total there of $2,394,000, so let's call it 2,240,000.
Right.
So with that, you would know from a budget standpoint, Chris, that you all would only pay the first $50,000 of any one claim, and then for the whole group, for the whole period, you would not pay over 2.4 million. So it's not really one claim or two or three large claims that's going to get you to that, it's going to be a lot of covered members having a lot of claims that fall under that $50,000 level.
Basically, the fixed cost kind of covers that insurance up to $50,000?
Correct.
Is that correct? And then the other, so it's almost like two different policies?
You're exactly right, it's two different policies. And you don't pay a whole lot for that, I should calculate that number, but 424, you know, times your 285, times 12, that number, which is probably around $20,000, you're paying $20,000 for that aggregate policy. So it's not a lot of premium that gets you to this ceiling, this $1,784,000, but the reason they don't charge a lot is that they've inflated that by 25% over what they expect you to have in claims. So again, the chances of hitting that are fairly minimal. And keep in mind, the first year, one of the beauties about coming off of fully insured, the first couple of months, we're not going to have much in claims, in medical. Now pharmacy is going to be day one when they go to the pharmacist, but your medical claims, you won't be covering those until starting January 1, but it's going to take 45 to 60 days for people to see a physician, for them to bill, and it'll be getting into the end of February, March, before you start really seeing some claim registers come in. How that would work, just to jump to that real quick, if we went to partial self-funding, you set up all of these vendors and the reinsurance to protect the county, to be set up to process claims. When that employee would go in to see a physician, they would want to, of course, stay in, in this example, the HealthLink network, they would go in and have their claim, they would pay their appropriate portion of a high deductible HSA-type plan or a traditional plan, whatever we come up with the final plan designs, the rest of that claim would be sent to the county on a check register from the third-party administrator, and you're going to see exactly what dollars are being spent every two weeks, if we set it up on a two-week register. Debbie's going to get a register, it's going to say there was 42 claims processed for $33,000, she would have a chance to review those, she would release dollars to a sweep account, that third-party administrator would release those checks to be paid to the providers. So you're going to see exactly where all of your dollars are going. So that would be happening on a two-week basis, and then they'll also bill you for your fixed cost, which are all these numbers I went through up on top, for their fees, the network fees, the reinsurance fees. So at the end of the day, we know you're going to pay $610,000, and if we didn't have any claims, that'd be all you would pay. We know we're going to have claims, so at the end of the day, we know that the most you're going to pay is the 2.4, but if you look back at the fully insured rates, the fully insured rates are going to 2.4, you know, almost 2.4 to 2.5 million. So it really makes partial self-funding attractive because you're not looking at paying out possibly more than you're paying fully insured, and the beauty is that anything between the 610,000 and the 2.4 million is money that you are going to keep in your account until the claims incurred, processed with a discount, and paid through the TPA. So if we have a good claims year, then you could have some dollars still in your account rather than them going out to a fully insured carrier. Let me stop with that, it's a lot to walk through, and I want to talk about a $75,000 option too, but any questions?
The only one that I really got is you're basing all this on 285, and it looks like we've kind of been around that, but over on the other side of the folder, you were at 289 subscribers, it looks like. And so, you know, I don't want to think that we're at 2.4 for 285 employees, if there's four more employees, our average is 290 or 300 or whatever it is.
And this census, now Joe checked with Debbie, this is your latest census, and you bring up a good point. These numbers, the numbers are going to stay, the fixed costs are going to stay level, but your census is going to go up and down. So as it goes up and down, your total cost you're paying will go up and down. You're not taking on more risk of over 50 or anything. But really, no different than your fully insured. If the county adds 10 more employees next month, of course, your cost for the insurance for the year is going up by 10 people. Three people retire, that goes down, so I mean, your monthly enrollment will be in ebb and flow, but it'll be apples to apples with the numbers we're looking at.
Right.
The costs are locked in, the fixed costs are, but your census will go up and down through.
Sure, based on the number of employees.
The one thing I want to point out, there's still some work to do here, so our main goal today is to get a feel from the commission, either today or as you let us know back, are you open to the concept of looking at partial self-funding? The thing that we have to do is get these reinsurance rates locked in, and we need to get the September claims from United, and it's probably going to be towards the middle to third week of October before we have those, but we want, the only thing that you could see change here would be the reinsurance rates. We do have three high claimants, the issue is, we don't get a lot of information from United on the specifics of that. A year from now, if we're partial self-funded, we will have very specifics, of course, that's private information, just amongst the privacy officers on this plan, but it allows us to market your reinsurance every year with a lot more detailed information. And one point on that too, when you go partial self-funding, we still market your plan every year, but what we're marketing is this reinsurance. And right now, we're down to three fully insured carriers in the market, you know, there's umpteen reinsurance companies out there. So behind the scenes every year, we'll market your reinsurance. And let's say this reinsurance carrier wants to raise rates 10% next year. Well, it's not 10% on your whole premium, it's 10% on those fixed rates for that $50,000, but we market that, we shop it, and you have just a lot more flexibility and options in the marketplace. Let me jump to the $75,000 real quick, and then there's a lot of.
Same analysis, different number.
It is, the main point at the bottom, and this is definitely your all's choice, but when you look at the $50,000 specific deductible fixed cost, 615,000, the $75,000 deductible's 470, and we've actually got a typo there, that 615 will be about 610, but your fixed cost savings is roughly, let's call it 150,000. The point of this is that if you would go to a $75,000 deductible, you're obviously taking on 25,000 more of exposure per person, but if you take that savings of roughly 25,000 per person, you know, or the 150,000 divided by 25, I mean, you would have to have almost six persons hit that $75,000 to not come out ahead. So if we had less than six people have a claim, you would be better off to take the $75,000, keep that $150,000 in fixed cost. If we had over six people hit it, you would start to go negative. But the last two years, we've only had three people that have exceeded that $75,000. So you don't have to make this decision today, but as we finalize numbers, it's something for you all to consider. We can always go with the 50 if you're more comfortable, and that 75 can be something we can look at in the future too, but it just goes to show you that the higher you raise that specific deductible, the higher you raise the specific deductible, the lower the premium. Just like buying.
Higher deductibles in your car insurance, as I mentioned.
And this is the $50,000. So it's like two different policies. So you're insured to cover that 50, and then your basic insurance is covering that.
A lot to think about. So the net effect is, if we stay with the existing coverage scheme, we're going to go to 2.4 million?
Correct.
And if we go to self-funded, we're going to go to 2.4 million?
If the reinsurance rates hold, which we are working to make.
So what's the benefit?
Well, the benefit is, if you stay fully insured, you're going to pay out 2.4 million dollars to United, whoever we go with. If you go partial self-funded, we know we're going to pay 610,000 out, and all the rest of that money is going to sit in your bank account until the claims incurred, processed, and paid with a discount. And if we only have, you know.
We have a really great claims year, it's a huge benefit.
You've got all the money.
We have a really awful claims year, 140%.
Then you're only going to pay the 2.4 million.
So we're absolutely 100% capped at 2.4 million, everything else is below that.
Right, unless the reinsurance numbers change, which we've got to work through these September numbers, but assuming they don't change, you know, it's really, there's no reason to have to go partial.
And we have a structured premium thing now where we pay 100% of the employee, we do a little tiny bit of paying for.
30%?
It's a real small amount we pay of the spouse and family coverage, if you take it. How much, how does that affect the premiums for the employees?
Premium, again, is a matter of, when you look at your exposure, and that brings up a great point, your exposure is going up from what was 1.8 million, let's call it 1.9 million, to 2.4 million. Whether we stay fully insured, if we stay fully insured, we've got to come up with that money because it's got to be paid out, and they're going to keep it.
Right.
Partial self-funded, we know we're still at that 2.4 as well, that is an exposure. If we had a terrible 140% ratio a year, and again, it's not the individual claimants, it's not two or three individuals, it's a lot of claims.
Right.
But if you hit that ceiling, you also have to come up with 2.4 million before your reinsurance carrier kicks in, the county's got to pay out the 2.4. So then it comes back to, out of that 2.4 million, where do you want to derive those dollars from? Are you at a point where you want to increase the premiums? You know, it has to be funded. So do you keep funding the bulk of it from the county? And the county has normally taken on the increases, of course, they've not been this large, we've normally been keeping them below single digits, or low single digits, but with this much of an increase, you know, is the county at a point that they can fund that liability difference, whether you stayed fully insured or partial self-funded?
Can we do an a la carte plan?
Meaning?
We would provide a fixed amount per employee, and I don't know what, you know, $5,000, I don't know, I'm just making a number up. And then they have options that they can pick of which plan they want and how they want to allocate it?
So then really, that leads into what's.
The bigger companies all do a la carte plans.
Really, it's called defined contribution. So when a business gets to a point that they're not paying 100% of the premium, and they're coming up with then a defined contribution of 5,000, or let's call it 450 a month, or whatever the dollar amount you want to use, the county is saying, this is our budget, I'm just using the number, $450 a month, and then you're offering employees options to go in and choose. And that's really where even the fully insured market's going to go, is, in the county.
And can we do that under the stop-loss concept?
Yeah, it's just a matter of how many plans you want to offer.
And what about as Obamacare kicks in? Is that going to have any impact on this particular form of funding? And what I don't want to do is get two years down the road and get a letter in the mail from United Healthcare saying, or whoever, saying, sorry, it's now banned.
Right. No, and that brings really up, it's kind of a segue to the pages behind this, and we won't go through all these, but we highlighted this at the last meeting, this part of it we did, and also, there's an article in here from CNBC that references to the Wall Street Journal. Self-funding has become a very popular way for businesses to avoid some of the healthcare reform taxes and fees. And this page specifically, the one that's HealthLink, there's about a 2.5% charge on a fully insured carrier to cover this, what's called a HIT tax that's coming next year. Next year, there's, they're estimating an $8 billion tax that's going to be generated on the fully insured carriers to help fund healthcare reform. That's about it, what the carriers are telling us, about 2.5% of your renewal is strictly a pass-through of that fee. So when you're partial self-funded, as it talks about here, you bypass that HIT tax. That HIT tax is a health insurance tax on fully insured carriers specifically. You also get rid of, there's currently a 2% tax in your fully insured premium that goes to the state of Missouri to fund the high-risk pool. So there's a state premium tax of 2% in Missouri that every fully insured carrier has to pay. So when we move to partial self-funding, you don't pay that 2% anymore. Well, those two taxes alone are 4.5%. So, but there is no indication marked on a crystal ball, but there's no indication they're going to ban partial self-funding, and most of your large employers in the United States are partial self-funded.
Let me rephrase the question then. Can they ban it without going through Congress and doing it again? I mean, is it something, my concern is, by regulation, they come in, they realize everybody's migrating to these plans, and they decide, well, we'll just solve that problem, we'll do a regulation.
Right.
Do they have the authority to ban these? Or does that actually require legislation? Because that's a huge difference from analysis.
It would require legislation, and it's probably going to be between the feds and the state. There's one state, and it's on the East Coast, that actually has banned self-funding for employers under 50, because the carriers are coming out, even United Healthcare, they've just came out with their All Savers program, which takes self-funding down to groups of 10 employees. So self-funding is going to be a method for businesses to use, if it makes sense for them, to avoid some of the taxes and fees. Will Missouri at some point say, if you're not a certain size, you can't self-fund? That could happen. I don't think you're going to see it happen on an employer your size, but there's a lot of business that are partial self-funded. The majority of large employers in Cole County, we insure the bulk of the large employers, but when you look at the city, obviously the county, county's still fully insured, but the city's partial self-funded, JCMG we handle, Capital Region Medical Center, you know, you look at all the larger employers, most of them are partial self-funded, Jefferson City Public School Districts, we handle their insurance program, all of those are partial self-funded, but they've gotten to a point where it made sense to make that transition. Last year, it didn't for the county, but our recommendation would be to move to partial self-funding.
In regards to Mark's comment on the a la carte plan, would, if we were to do something like that, would that meet that minimum value that we had talked about the last time, or?
Very good question. You've got a good memory, Chris. What's happening on the minimum value, you can offer more than one plan, and the employers that are going to the defined contribution approach, to make, you have to make sure that your lowest benefit plan meets that value, which is, so it's not costing your employees more than 9.5% of their adjusted income, their gross income. So, we could have a couple different plans. You could, so as an example, to Mark's point, if we offer, if we still offer a traditional-type plan and a high deductible HSA, as long as that high deductible HSA plan meets the minimum value, and of course, it's going to be priced a little bit less, you're offering everyone a plan that meets minimum value for them. If Randy wants to choose a plan that's higher, lower deductible copayments, and I'm going to pay out an extra $100 a month to do that, it doesn't violate you offering me a plan.
Okay.
So, that'll be something to look at as we develop plans and rates. So, there's still a lot of work to be done. If the commission is of the mind to move forward or to look at partial self-funding, we know where the fully insured rates are. There's no rate relief there. You know, they're ready to lock in because, of course, they're going to get all the money and keep it. On partial self-funding, we've got to get the reinsurance carrier locked in, and we've got to get them another months of claims and work on a couple things with them to lock in those rates that we've looked at. So, assuming that those hold without much change, I mean, it definitely is our recommendation to make that transition. Beyond that, we need to get with Debbie and really start talking about setting up the processes and the procedures with the vendors to get this set up by year-end, and obviously do employee education probably in November, towards maybe the middle to end of November, to explain the plan. For your employees, by the way, it's a good point. We want them to know it's partial self-funded. We want them to be thinking about being good stewards of healthcare costs. But for them, they're going to have a card. It's going to look and feel just like a fully insured card. They're going to go in and get their plan of benefits of whatever plan they choose. So, the self-funding aspect has no bearing at the employee or the member level. I mean, they're still going to go in and get services under whatever plan of benefits that's been offered to them that they've chosen. They'll be using, as an example, the HealthLink network, if we go with one of the HealthLink companies, rather than United Healthcare's network as an example.
I mean, is it possible to do an a la carte plan and still do partial self-funding? I assume you're-
Oh, yeah. I mean, you can, you all could, so it gets back to the, it gets back to the point of the county. And the county's going to have to decide, using the analogy as Mark mentioned, I mean, your 2.4 million either way is your liability.
Right.
And out of that, even currently, your employees that have dependents are paying the bulk of their dependent costs. So, they're helping fund that, too. So, what we're going to have to come up with is what is the billable premiums that the county's willing to pay and the employees, whether you all continue to pay all the premium for the employees, as you've done, or there's a cost sharing. And then, of course, for these, for the dependents, they're paying the bulk of that, too. But part of that 2.4 million liability is the cost for covering those dependents, so that they're going to have to continue to pay an appropriate part for their family coverage.
I don't see the downside to not looking at partial self-funding, so I'm very open to it.
I mean, I think we have to look at it. I don't even think it's, I don't even think it's an option anymore. Jeff?
Mm-hmm.
Let's move down the path to doing partial self-funding, then. I think that's what we're here-
Yes.
And start setting it up. I mean, obviously, we would like to main, I think, we should try to maintain the plans and packages as consistent for the employees as possible, as opposed to really trying to radically change them. I would be curious to see if United Healthcare will adjust their numbers. Obviously, it'd be nice to keep with the same system.
Right. So, we'll work on that. That was our thought, too. We'll go back to United. That would be their TBA UMR, but it would keep the network, but their numbers are obviously high, so. All right. We will get to it on that.
All right.
Thank you guys very much for addressing a very difficult issue.
It is. Thank you all very much. It's definitely not just the county.
And it'll change next week.
And it'll change next week.
Yes, it will. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
It's a lot to chew on, isn't it?
The rest of your day has to be better than that.
I don't know. You, it, only two people are leaving the room. Look at the crowd. I think we're going to go quite a while here.
It's either this or roofing.
This or roofing. You don't know which is more fun.
I was thinking I knew which was more fun, but after that last hour, I might change my mind.
Chris?
Depends on how bad the roof is.
Let's talk about the, let's talk about the extension update.
Okay. I want to give you some information about what has happened out there since June, and then I'll give you an opportunity to review our budget request. And if you don't have a copy of that with you, I do have copies here. In the human and environmental sciences area, we had 109 individuals participate in four different types of programs since June. This includes our Stay Strong, Stay Healthy program, which is the physical activity program for seniors. Benefit here is keeping them active, and more importantly, keeping them in their homes longer to avoid those managed care costs for long-term care or nursing home cares or something of that nature. The other, another one was stress management. In the area of 4H, where there was obviously the event added to Fair. Right now, we have about 300 youth involved in a variety of 4H programs. We have nine of the traditional clubs operating in the county, and then we have seven single project clubs. The single project club, our largest one right now is shooting sports. We have singles, project club for both dogs and horses also. Number of adult volunteers supporting all these club activities probably is in the range of 250 to 270 adults participating. Master gardeners are out in the community, being active, keeping things looking pretty. If you've been by the Extension Center, you've seen just a ton of work they have done out there to make that place look better. In our fall, master gardening class has started up. We have 19 people participating in that. On my business plan side of the house, in the last six months, I've worked with 24 unique businesses, be they a business or an individual. That's incorporated a little over 120 individual sessions with them. In terms of the traditional programming, I've done 11 in the last six months, and I've had a total of 44 attendees. For the year, clients I have worked with have reported about $2 million of economic impact. The majority of that has been in increased sales. Not that much right now in terms of financing. Activities within the office ourself, since June, we've had about 1,600 individual contacts by either people walking in or phone calls, seeking some type of help. We conducted our annual fundraising event at the fairgrounds in September. We netted about $9,700 from that. That money all goes to support the Extension Center out there. In the last couple of years, we probably put $100,000 worth of improvements out there. And if you look at our parking lot right now, we're going to have some major concrete repairs coming up in the next four or five years, which tends to be fairly expensive. So, the dollars that we raise from the Fall Festival is dedicated towards that. Any questions on our activities?
I think you guys do a great job out there.
Thank you. Appreciate that. In terms of our budget for next year, if we go down to the bottom line, we're asking for a little over $97,000. That represents a 2.3% increase, or a little over $2,100 in total. Our actual budget is going to take to operate the center is a little over $141,000. So, we are generating almost $50,000 of revenue to support center operations from other sources. If you look at all of our operating account expenses, we're projecting an increase of about 70 bucks. We've got-
Debbie, see the bar that's being set for you?
We've got four accounts that we think we're going to be able to cut some costs in. We have four accounts that we don't project any change at all. Those are pretty fixed and are going to stay the same. And we have two accounts where we've got an increase. And when you total all those up, the difference is about 70 bucks. The big increase is in personnel cost. When we start our planning process, I have to build the budget in June to take it to the Finance Committee in July, who can take it to the full council in August, so I can have it to you the first week of September. When I am projecting costs, most years, I have to estimate what I think a compensation increase that might be funded by the county. Obviously, right now, you have no idea. I have no idea. So, I planned or included about a 3% increase. Whether or not that happens, nobody knows right now.
That's what this is based on?
That's what this is based on. The other increase is on staff benefits. We've been skating on thin ice for a while by not carrying workers' compensation insurance, and we had to do that because the staff that runs 4H camp during that time period, they're employees of the council, which puts us over the five-employee limit. So, we had to get workers' compensation insurance and start carrying that. That's about a $1,500 a year increase. Last year, we were able to get an additional source of funds to cover that cost. I'm optimistic we can get it this year. So, it's kind of a money coming in, money going right back out.
Okay. Any questions? Is that it, Chris?
Unless you want me to go into much greater detail.
I get very detailed what you've given us, and I appreciate that. You guys have any questions for Chris?
No, I just, I met with Chris a couple weeks ago, and he kind of showed me all the facility and everything, and I appreciate that. And I think you guys do a great job out there, and so, keep up the good work.
A lot more out there than you thought.
Yeah.
There is.
Yeah.
Looks to be deceiving from the roads.
Yes, it is.
We have council meetings, but Thursdays.
First Thursday of the month.
Yeah.
They're open forum. Anybody's welcome to attend. If one of you can come and keep Jeff under control, we would really appreciate it.
We're going to have pizza next month.
Okay. On that note, thank you very much, Chris. We really do appreciate the good work. Everybody out there does.
Thank you.
Give our thanks to the staff out there, too.
Will do.
Thank you.
Who's going to keep Gafki under control, though?
You.
We'll try.
They don't even let us sit by each other.
All right. Maintenance contract on sheriff's PA system. Greg?
When we updated the phones, we killed the ability to use the PA system on the phones. What this does is this is just an annual maintenance contract, and it allows them also to, at the same time, redo the damage by upgrading the phones. $1,800.
Okay.
In budget, out of budget?
Out of budget.
In your fund, though?
The transfer paper on the back says contingency.
But it's out of law enforcement?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any problem with it.
Got to have a PA system.
I entertain a motion to approve the contract with the CenturyLink Sales Solutions, Inc., for $1,846.50.
Approve and sign, or just approve?
Approve.
Well, we'll roll call vote it.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Call roll, please, Betty.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, by roll call vote, contract is approved. And I think we have to sign these. Just one. Here you go.
Thank you.
Jeff, can you sign that real quick?
Yep.
Accounts payable review.
I think I got one in there right.
Yeah, you do.
For solid waste.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect that Jeff abstained.
Abstained.
Accounts payable review is approved. Second and final reading of budget adjustment number 12.
This is sheriff's grant, so for $100,000, it's for the Mustang Drug Task Force.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve budget adjustment number 12 for $107,516.16 for the Mustang Drug Task Force.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call roll.
Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, by a roll call vote, budget adjustment 12 is approved. Budget adjustment, second and final reading, budget adjustment number 13.
$29,345,000 is for the Highway Safety and Insurance Fund.
DWI enforcement grants. Is that right, Greg?
Yes, and the hazardous motor vehicle.
And hazardous motor vehicles. I entertain a motion to approve budget adjustment number 13. $29,345 for DWI and hazardous moving vehicle grants.
So moved.
Second.
The motion, second. Call roll, please.
Mark?
Yes.
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 By a roll call vote, budget adjustment 13 is approved.
As a side note to all of this, the state wants to find the bulletproof grant, the Mustang grant. We're having trouble with reporting because the feds have decided to take down the website during the lockdown.
Yeah, you know, send them a bill. Tell them we're charging interest. Assessors occupancy reports.
This will be brief.
Excellent.
We've got two spreadsheets, one for occupancies, available for errors and omissions.
Okay, so we have two spreadsheets, one occupancy and one for errors and omissions.
You done one of these before, Chris? Have we done one of these?
Why don't you have a seat right there and use the microphone, and then we can-
Chris has done the, the occupancies.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did occupancies before. So, everybody understands occupancies pretty easily.
I'll explain the difference later.
I entertain a motion to approve the occupancies. So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, errors and omissions. You want to just run through these real quick?
Okay. The first parcel on the list is some sort of construction. I would say it was certified as of January 1st as being occupied and full value was placed on that parcel. And so, it's not occupied, so we need to remove it, and it's going to be a land only for 2013.
Okay.
The second one is a common ground parcel. As of January 1st, both condos on that parcel were occupied, so they were placed at full value. There's no land value for common ground once that occurs.
Okay.
And thirdly is just a wrong school district. This was something that the board heard, and it was in JC School District, and it was supposed to be an R word.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the errors and omissions.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. See, that was good. Thank you very much. Because now we're gonna get into a longer one again, right?
There should have been two extensions on there, but that's a question.
Marvin and Barry's occupancy is on the list. That's what I was thinking. I don't even have indoor plumbing, so I thought I was way over. About all the works.
Yeah. Show us the outhouse, and we'll discuss it, Larry.
We tried to talk to him yesterday, but he couldn't.
All right.
Buddy, Esther's gonna do anything about that?
Okay.
Oops, is that out loud?
That was out loud and on the microphone. Discussion of proposed zoning plan code and map for Cole County. Shannon, Larry, Dick, come on forward.
Come forward.
What we'd like to do is...
You gotta use the microphone. Come on, Larry, you've done this enough times already now.
I know. What we'd like to do is just bring you up to speed on where we're at and what we're doing. We've got a written draft of what we feel is a workable set of regulations, zoning regulations. It's currently being still reviewed by HBA. We haven't received comments back from them. We just got the comments back from JC Board of Realtors. We're in the process of, our next meeting, we'll be going through those. I guess we're open to kind of any questions, or any indication. Have you all had a chance to look at the zoning regulations? Is there anything that stands out? What we're trying to do as a committee is to get all the comments from the major players out of the way, so we can address, you know, if there's individuals who have concerns, that we can address that and not have Board of Realtors, or HBA, or Farm Bureau, any of those come in behind and say, well, we've got these. We're trying to get everything, get our ducks in a row.
Well, obviously, you are, we are your advisory commission, and the final decision is up to you as the commissioners as to what plan we actually propose, and if we propose it to the voters for approval. So rather than us continue to work for months, we think we've got a pretty finalized plan that we need to start getting input from particularly the commissioners and any other interested parties, so that when we go to the public hearings, we have a more finalized draft. We want to get as far as we can down the road and get a plan that everyone likes. We're totally open. You know, we started with nothing and developed a plan. You know, some comments have been, maybe it's too detailed, maybe it's not detailed enough. Obviously, there are specific things that particular Realtors or the builders may or may not like. We want to hear those things and make those changes. We're totally open. I don't, we're not setting our ways in any, we're just trying to develop a workable plan that is fair and gives us some development in the county.
I know, Mark, you had had some comments, and we've incorporated those into it.
Okay, good.
You know, again, what I guess we'd like from you all, and it doesn't have to be today, but we'd like something, a yea or nay, you know, is this something that you can support and we can go forward with it? You know, like Dick said, we are your advisory committee. We want to make sure we're on the right track, you know, with spending.
In the end, you guys have to make a recommendation.
Right.
I mean, in the end, it doesn't make any difference how we feel. You guys are autonomous with respect to a recommendation that you make.
Right. And that's what we've tried giving you. We've got what we feel is workable. We did get some comments from the Board of Realtors. Like I said, our next meeting in November, we'll be going through those.
Can we encourage the HBA to hurry up and get their comments in so that...
Yes.
We can get this done in one shot?
And if you're getting constituent comments, we'd like to hear those, whether you agree or disagree with them, we'd still like to hear what they are, so that we can weigh in with it.
I haven't gotten comments at all, really, to be honest with you.
I haven't either. And HBA's had it for a while. If they haven't heard anything, I know the Board of Realtors sent it up to the National Association, and they went through it, and really, there were only a couple of things that would even affect locally. The other ones were stuff that nationally, they looked at and they tried to pick through.
Right, broader scope.
Yeah, and I think HBA mentioned something about maybe the height of the buildings, but that's already been taken out. Y'all caught that already, so I think it's probably ready to go. I'd just notify them, say we're ready.
They have a height restriction in the city, don't they?
Yes, depending on the district.
Yeah, on the district. I know that, especially around the Capitol, there's restrictions.
Sight distance on the Capitol.
Yeah, it's sight distance, so.
So in other words, the skyscrapers have to be in the county.
Yeah, especially anywhere around the Capitol, it'd have to be out.
We're working on that 104-story skyscraper.
I think if they take the guy off the top of the Capitol, that new hospital's gonna be too tall, so they better hope nothing happens with it.
One specific thing I know that was addressed was that we want to make sure that there was something in there, a preamble or such, that would foster development. And that's specifically what was added in Chapter 1, Section 1.2 purpose, there was a second there that, if I may, real quick, Mark, just for the record. The zoning regulations are designed to provide predictable standards and a streamlined development process that promotes economic development and protects property rights. While these regulations balance the interest of neighborhoods and the county as a whole, it is the county's policy to work cooperatively with property owners and developers to ensure that these regulations are predictable and development-friendly. We did want to make sure we had something like that in there.
Good.
I already received one comment back from a member of HBA, so they would really like seeing that in there.
So when you're done with...
Thank you for putting that in for me. I appreciate that. It's a big issue to me.
So when you're done with this zoning thing, can you work on revising this?
Absolutely.
If you so instruct the committee, you know, or re...
I don't want to make you retire early, because I think you mentioned that. If we start to do that, you want to do it after you retire.
With anything, like we've always discussed, for that subdivision, Regulation Rules for Land subdivision, in its zoning code, they're living documents. You're gonna find times when they need to be changed, you know, one way or the other, foster what the county needs, or what, you know, trends change, patterns change, populations change. There's always that mechanism and impetus for change in those regulations.
Have it been changed at all?
They have been changed.
Since 99?
No.
So when we get done with zoning, we need to look at these.
Yes.
Who are you asking?
I think if you weren't here, I would nominate you to chair that also.
Continuing Committee. Last time I checked, it was called the Continuing Committee for all projects.
Y'all seem to be good at these thankless jobs. I want to thank you for doing the thankless jobs.
You're welcome.
No, I do appreciate everything you guys are doing, because it's tough to go through the zoning issue.
In regards to the map, real quick, we know it is a very broad, in general, type of map. You know, it's basically based upon what the recommendations were in the comprehensive plan, master plan. We know that there's going to be some comment on that, some people want some change immediately, and we expect that, you know, at those public meetings and hearing, that's one thing. If they've got, they specifically know that their property, they want it a little different based on what, you know, they might have a little bit different use on it than what's currently showing up, we're going to encourage them to go ahead and mark that in and fill out comment cards, so we can try and get that, get those changes and assess those situations to make sure that's what it is. Or if they know that they're going to have future development, we've had a couple farmers tell us already that they know, yeah, we're looking probably to develop down the road. We'd like to leave some kind of legacy for our kids, you know, so they don't have to worry about the fickle game agriculture.
Trailers?
Never.
That, too? Yes.
Had to say it, didn't you?
Well, this is a working document.
Oh, we had one to planning commission.
This whole thing is a working document that we're working with. If someone from the public makes a comment or a recommendation that makes sense and fits in with the overall plan, we'll change it. It's just that simple. That's what we want from the public. We want things that make sense, that need to be changed, that maybe we didn't catch because we didn't have all the information. I mean, when we get done, we, obviously, probably not everyone will be happy, but we plan on doing that thing.
We realize there's going to be some that just don't want any regulation at all, and, you know, it's going to be up to the democracy of Cole County to, you know, vote it in or vote it down.
Right.
And that's, you know, as far as the committee, I think all of us feel it's a good idea, but it's up to the voters. It's not up to us or to the commission. You know, all we can do is present the best workable plan to the citizens and give them a chance to speak their mind by voting yes or no.
Yeah, I've reviewed it a little bit, and I think, I mean, if you guys are ready to put it on the streets for everybody to look at, I mean, I know we got it out to Board of Realtors and HBA, and, but I think the sooner that we get it out and let everybody look at it, the quicker we're going to find where we may need to make some adjustments.
Okay. What we'd like to do is, again, is go through the comments. We're gonna, again, contact HBA and see if we can get that finalized, or if they're gonna have any official comments to it. The committee, I'd like for them to go through the Board of Realtors and take a look at those, and so we can get them on board, too. The more support we can get from the groups, the better off, you know, this has a chance of passing. It's like when we did building codes a number of years ago. We had HBA in behind it, and I think that's one of the reasons it passed.
Are we looking to do some public meetings and...
We will.
Yes.
Definitely. This will also be trying to compress it a little bit. This will be put back up on the website, so people can download it as a PDF format. Working with that right now. So, and then we always have copies available at our office. I can get you guys more hard copies up here if you would like also.
If you can put that in, you know, if they do have difficulties getting on site, to get it off on the internet, they can always contact us, and we'll get them a copy.
We should. Probably within a week. Probably within a week, we should have this back up online.
We'll try.
Well, and after our October meeting, hopefully, we've got all the comments in there moving forward.
Yeah. You might go ahead and leave a copy, Mel do, and leave one in the clerk's office, too, just for now.
Right.
You can email PDF to me. I don't need copies.
You should have a copy of this, this year. I think we sent it out a week or two ago.
Yeah, 10-1?
Yeah, that's...
Yes. It should be the most recent draft.
I sent it to you right after our last committee meeting.
So the latest one is...
Yeah.
That's fine, I'm just, you all trying to outdo the insurance guys by getting a thicker package.
Well, we haven't, like I said, we haven't incorporated any of the stuff from the Board of Realtors. We just got that, was it Monday or...
Dave asked you.
Dave asked yesterday, yeah, so we didn't, we have not, as a committee, had a chance to go through them and line by line where they had comments and looked at.
Is it hourly, or should we...
If there's nothing else from us, that's basically all we had. We just wanted to bring you up to speed, let you know where we're at. We're probably still, probably a couple months out yet, depending on what, how long it takes to go through the Board of Realty, or Realtors' comments. But we should by, I'd say, the end of the year, have something where we can start having public meetings on it.
Great. We look forward to the public meetings. Getting lots of comment.
I'm kind of with...
What value are we looking at?
I'm kind of with Mark, though. Give the HBA and the Board of Realtors a deadline and tell them you need to review.
We've got Board of Realtors.
We do have.
We just got...
When's your November meeting?
It's...
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday in November.
November 5. Okay. You know, I think you need to get them far enough advanced, you have a chance to let the board members or the commission members. I mean, I'd say, who are you working with at HBA? Vicki?
Vicki.
I mean, I think I would tell them, you know, if they can't get us comment, get you guys comments by the 25th October, they've waived their ability to get input.
Well, and Gary...
As an association, I mean, they can...
Gary Crone's on, and he's actually on the board, I think, at this point.
They just need to, you know, realize, we want to move this forward. I'd like to, you know, once the new year starts, I'd like to be out doing public hearings.
Okay.
We would, too.
Okay.
Been a long process.
Yeah, an expensive one, too. All right, thank you all very much. We really appreciate it. Dick, thanks for your service.
Thanks, Shannon.
Please tell the rest of your commission, thank you for their service.
Do that.
I'm not sure they knew what they were getting into.
Sure they did.
Larry, care leave committee recommendation?
We just had one of them. Must be somebody different.
Good morning.
Morning.
We all hoarding these things over there, or what?
The care leave committee is requesting the use of another 138 hours for the same employee as the previous two months. This would leave us, our 1,317.25 hours left in the care leave.
Okay.
Our bank would leave this employee with, I believe, 132 hours left for November.
Okay.
How many hours would be remaining, you said? 1,300?
In the bank.
In the bank and pool. This employee would, I believe, I think would have 132 left for November, or 142.
She'll be covered to the end of November. If you still vote on it, she'll only have 10 hours left until December. And then she would have reached the maximum.
I move we approve the care leave committee's recommendation.
Second.
My motion's second. Approved care leave committee recommendation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Larry, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone who donates time to that. Good entity, good organization. All right, I may skip you, Marvin, just to make you wait longer. Get a little presumptuous walking up here.
I should be decked.
You know, we control the agenda. We can always move things around.
I can watch him amend the agenda.
Oh, look at that. He moved to amend the agenda.
Don't give me the throw. I brought my guns with me today.
All right.
You brought two of them.
Let's talk about voter canvas.
All right, we're gonna talk about voter canvas.
That's pretty.
As you all know, we do voter canvas every two years, and this next year, our voter canvas is going to be going on for 14, so that means it will be mailing out new voter cards. And we found this company that does voter canvases, and we find that they do a really, really excellent job for us, well, for the people. We haven't used them yet, but based on, if you look, you can see what we spend on postage every year, and this next year, I'm figuring that our postage is going to be about $18,455 for us to do our canvas, and we have a estimate from Edward G. Rice that they will do it for $17,651.57.
You already have that in your budget?
No, I don't have that in my budget.
Oh, this is next year, right?
Yeah.
Did you submit that?
Well, I think we have it in there.
You submitted in the budget?
I submitted, I think, and didn't we have it put in there?
I have to go back.
All right. Marla's frenetically shaking her head back there, Marvin.
I thought we did. I thought that I talked to Chris and we had it put in.
I was not involved in your budget.
No.
I don't know. I didn't think it was, because you didn't find out about this until after you turned in your budget money.
Yeah, I know, but I turned it in, and I called Chris and had Chris add it to it.
Okay.
But anyway, what, we don't budget for our postage anyway. You pay that anyway through the machine, and we run it through that. But by just the postage alone, we will save money on that, because they're able to do their postage at...
Nine cents? They do it as a nonprofit?
They do it as nonprofits, and we pay 36 cents the first time, and then we pay the first class the second time. And just to show you how really nice I am, it's only going to cost you $12,000 out of the postage this year, because I've got $6,000 in grant money that we can put into it. So it's basically going to save the county some money this year. What happens in two years, I can't tell you.
So what do you need from us?
I think it's from, based on what, talking to people and the comments that they gave I think it's from, based on what, talking to people and the comments that they gave us. You know, I've talked to a lot of people about, about this company, they say it is excellent. What they do is to explain to you how they do it, they do it opposite of what we do. We send out the, all the forms and the cards and everything and then they come back. And we normally get somewhere around 4,000, somewhere in that range or plus, back of people that have moved. What they do is go ahead and they'll take our voter list, they'll send it to a mailing service company and they'll do all the addresses. Once they've corrected all the addresses, then they send the cards out. And once they send the cards out, they get about, they said 12% back and that's, that's a savings of quite a bit of money right there. Cause the 12%, based on what they're telling us, is like 2,400, where we're always getting about 4,000 back. So, we're gonna save money in that postage there also.
Okay.
It's gonna save the county money, even the first year.
I think why we're, why we're here is the process needs to be started now. For this company to do our addresses and stuff and so, we can't wait until the first of the year, basically, to get the process started. So, I think we're just wanting to know.
You want it on this budget?
Well, not necessarily on this budget, but we don't want to start the process and then January 1, we get our budget for next year and then there's no money to do it.
And we've already, we've gave, talked to Jennifer and we know we have to bid it. And we know that this is the only company out there that does this. So, we've already got the RFP and everything ready to go. We just need for you all to agree to it because you're paying for it anyway through the postage. You know, it's, whatever we spend, you're gonna spend.
I'm fine with it.
I just got a couple of questions. So, I realize that a lot of people use their voter ID cards, but currently, you're taking driver's licenses and can scan them, is that correct?
Well, we take the driver's license, but we're asking now, since we do have the voter cards, they have the barcode on it. So, we, we're asking either for the driver's license or the voter card because it has a barcode on it, we can get scanned both.
Okay.
So, if they come in, you know, a lot of people don't like showing their driver's license.
Right.
They think it's a, it's a photo ID and they don't like that yet.
So, I, so, I just got one other question. Why can't people register online and print theirs out on their own computer?
Not allowed by statutes to do it that way.
Not like any other permit?
You have to fill out a voter registration card and mail it to us. And what we want to really see is some, some way of an ID and that's usually their driver's license.
I think Chris's question's the other way around. If, I don't think he's, you're not talking about people who first come in to register to vote, you're talking about us. We're already registered to vote, you're gonna mail us a new card. Why can't you just?
It'd be similar to.
Print off my own card?
Yeah, it'd be similar to printing a hunting permit from Department of Conservation or whatever.
By law, we have to mail, we have to do a postal canvas every two years. We have to mail out the voter cards, our office does, every two years to, that way we clean up our records.
Whether we need one or not.
Right, whether you need one or not.
Whether you need one or not, you're gonna get one.
Can you make them smaller? Well. Basically, you'll have to do it. The thing about these cards that we're using now, a lot of people get them and throw them away because they think it's junk mail. I've had a lot of people that, that are using this card now and they say that they're voters when they get this voter card, that they like it. They, they put it in their billfold and it's something that they're not gonna throw away because they will stop and read it. Because when it's completely filled out, it'll have your name, your polling place and, and all the other information.
It'll have the barcode on it too.
Yeah, and it will have a barcode.
Is that why you were asking was to hopefully say postage or we don't have to mail it?
Well, I, I think, you know.
Why send a new card?
Yeah, why send a new card out if, you know, if you can go in and fill out a change of address or whatever and then print it out right from your computer? Now, you've got a piece of paper that says you're a registered voter and then you can show ID as well, so. It was just a thought and, you know, if we have, if we have to mail them out by law or.
We have to mail, we, we don't have a choice, Chris, it's, it's statute.
Yeah, the whole purpose of it is to make sure that they truly live there. So, it's gotta go through the postal process to make sure that that card doesn't get returned. That's why we have to do it because people can say they live in a place and go ahead and vote because they don't want to take the time to change the address. So, it's all verification process is why they make us mail them out every two years.
After we send that first card out, that first card out, it comes back, then we also have to turn around. If the post offices gave us a new address, we have to send them another card the second time, trying to get them to sign that card and send it back to us so we can get the correct address.
I'm just, I'm just curious and maybe you don't know and maybe that's something you can work with the County Clerks Association or whatever, but I would assume that, that there's probably a lot of people that aren't getting mail. Just like people don't have home phone numbers anymore, but with online bill pay and everything else, you don't have to receive mail. So, I'm just wondering if people may not even put up mailboxes.
But we haven't, you know, we haven't had that problem yet that we know of.
You don't, yeah.
So, you know.
The statutes, trust me, the one thing I can tell you is the statutes have not caught up to technology.
No, we're in a process, the County Clerks Association is in the process of working with the House of Representatives right now to change a lot of the statutes in 115. And we hope to have a House bill to come up this year that will change a lot of things that's, that's out there in 115 that doesn't have anything to do with anything anymore, like lever machines. I don't even know what one is, never seen one. And I had to ask somebody the other day, I, that's been a clerk for a long time, so I asked him, what is a lever machine? And they told me, they said, Marvin, I've never really seen one either, but the only ones that I really know of was, was in St. Louis or Kansas City. They used to use them there. So, I mean, that's still in, and it's still in 115. So's, so's, so's the punch cards. So, we're in a process of trying to get that cleaned up.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with this.
But I think that this program would, would be a good program for us to get into. It's still gonna be on next year's budget cycle, so y'all just need to know for sure. Yeah, cause what I'm gonna do, what I have to do is have him bill me if, if, cause I, we're gonna, we have to do the bid first and get that in and once we know we got that in, then we can request the grant money and pay that $6,000 out of our grant, which will save us, save us that money this year.
Okay.
Go for it.
Okay, sounds good.
I. You want a copy of it? You got one?
Is this, is this what they're gonna look like Marvin or?
Thank you Marvin. That'll be, that'll be the card that's gonna go out and everybody so far has really liked that card.
Sure like it better than the blue and yellow, I can never figure out which one was what.
Yeah, we were actually going to, what color were we going to if we did it that way?
Magenta.
Green, I think, we were going to a green card.
I like this much better.
A green card.
Oh, I do too, I think.
Sorry. And they don't want to show ID.
But they'll have to show their green card. Yeah, can you imagine what happened if you mailed out green cards?
Wouldn't be getting any back.
Yes. Thank you all very much, appreciate Marvin, Don, Marla, thank you all.
Thanks.
Surplus title?
Well, this is the juvenile vehicle, that was totaled, I'm not sure how you want me to do this. We have to sign it over to the insurance company.
All right, I entertain motion to approve surplus title, juvenile vehicle.
So, moved.
Any discussion, call roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I recall the title's approved. Michael, we just got rid of your vehicle.
How you gonna pay for a new one?
Welcome. Oh, look at this, he's got brochures, everything.
Go see surplus property.
Take a look and then after I brought it to her, she says, we gotta bid that. So, so I went over and we went to the state bid and I went to every, I went to every dealer in town. Ford does not make vans anymore, Chevy does not make vans anymore. So, I went to Capital Chrysler, went to Nissan, went to Honda, I went from new, used and all. So, new ones are going from 26.5 to 29. And Capital Chrysler is 20,265, but the state bid was 20,271. And I think, but then it's a $400 difference for.
423 for rear heating and air conditioning option.
Right, for in the back, they have air in the back when you have that.
It's all in the state contract?
On the state contract.
That's easiest way to solve that then.
Go get one of surplus property.
They don't have vans.
Oh, come on, they got all kinds of stuff.
Governor's Motors got vans parked down there, got ladder racks and everything.
Governor's got an extra airplane.
I want to talk about the governor's.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the governor's private motor pool.
It's not, it's not some fancy van you're getting here, is it wide or plain Jane?
Stripped down version, we're not asking for anything that we don't need. And on the state contract, it's just the.
You can look at the features if you want.
The bare minimum of what we're asking.
It's just a passenger van.
Passenger van, seven passenger van.
Works for me. Three six, six liter.
We were looking at this issue anyway, next year, they have three vehicles, they're all about the same age, so we have not requested.
No.
Here you go, Michael.
Okay.
Michael knows the word.
So, what do you need?
Frugal up here.
I just want to make sure you're okay with me purchasing this out of sales tax. The insurance proceeds is only 5,000 on the old vehicles, so the difference is gonna have to come out of sales tax.
Yep, and we keep a vehicle line in sales tax, so.
Yeah, we just haven't paid for the two planning vehicles yet, we haven't received those yet, so that's what was only budgeted in there. So, I will have to do a transfer.
Okay.
And.
Where are we at on the other three?
There, well, he was coming up with a budget for $2,000.
Okay, so.
So, it's next year's budget?
Right, but when I was here the first time, you asked for me to go back and look at what the maintenance record was on that Crown picture. I was asking for the Crown picture and I can't justify the Crown picture, it's only had seven, less than $700 worth of repairs on that that was coming in last year, so. But we are stripping that van that was total because now our reservoir for our radiator started to leak on the gray, on the gray van, so we're taking parts off of it and putting it on.
Perfect.
I love it, I love it.
So, we are.
Take the tires and everything else too.
Okay.
No, no, they won't go by with that. I mean, all the equipment, everything you can strip out.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're.
Don't take no tires.
No, we took the hubcaps because we were missing hubcaps, so we're fixing the other one up, okay.
La 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 la. I've got 200,000 plus miles on all three of my vehicles, so I don't have a whole lot of.
Okay.
They can drive if it still gets you there.
Thank you.
Do I just?
Do we need to do anything here?
We don't need to do anything on it.
Okay.
Nope.
White.
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 Just what, what it was.
Can't get blue with a silver star on the door. Thanks, Michael.
The pearl paint. White pearl.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Are we talking about roofs today too, or not?
Roof?
With Jennifer, are we talking about roofs again, roof pins?
Welcome back.
Welcome back Jennifer, good to see you.
One thing why she is here, um, the same topic of vehicles, we had the ambulance that just sent through the auction.
How much, 45, 35, 45? What's bottom dollar? I might need a work van.
Well, we have a new one now, we have another one that we need to get rid of, we had two, we were gonna try this.
Right.
We tried it, we had 43. Would you like her to go back on gov.deals and do the other one again? Or would you let me just send it up to the auto auction again and be done with it?
Who bought the last one, do we know?
It was through the auction though.
With the gov. deals, initially when I put that out there, we got, I wanna say $10,500 and then the bidder never paid for it. So, that was awesome and then I put it back on there and I think it was at 6,000 and then Mike had put the minimum at 6,500. And you could, at that point, have gone back and accepted the 6,000, but that's right whenever I went on the front end lane, so it just kind of fell through the cracks. So, that's where it landed, it was at about 6,000. I don't really have anything. I don't know if we'd have ended up gotten that one either. Yeah, I mean, they could have not paid too, who knows?
Well, I called Mike when he, I sent that other email and I said, I don't know anything, what are these things gonna bring? It, he's like, take, take the 4,500 or whatever it was and run. And so, that's why I said I was fine with it.
It just, it's whatever someone's willing to pay for it.
Can we try gov. deals for 30 days and then go to the? Is it worth messing with, do you feel like we can get more?
It's not difficult to put on there, I mean, it's no more difficult than eBay, it's essentially the same thing.
Basically, I'm saying just get rid of it, I don't want to have to mess with it, get as much as we can.
Well, can she have the authority?
Yes.
If it goes over 4,500 or 4,500, she could sell it.
Yes.
Okay.
How's that?
Over or under?
Over.
Over.
Okay, so now we got a new minimum reserve price of 45. If it's less than that, then holler, yes.
Sold, I'm sorry.
Hey, where's it at, can I test drive it? Cause I'm, no, I'm serious. At EMS or at Public Works? Okay.
All right, first reading budget. Thank you Jennifer, run, trust me. You know what he's like, it won't stop.
Oh, dude, I have my own ambulance, does this still have the side?
No, go, go, trust me.
This is the same thing, but it's a sheriff's vehicle that was wrecked, it's first reading, 12,497.75. It's basically the, 5,000 of it is for the vehicle that was totaled, the other 7,400 was an extra surplus property that they received over what was budgeted for the vehicles they sold. So, they need all that money back in their budget and have to buy a vehicle.
Sits for 10 days and we'll take it back up.
So, they're, they're got money from the insurance company for a total vehicle and then other stuff that they sold?
Yeah, other vehicles that they sold over what was already budgeted.
I got a couple other real quick things, did you guys get your Ameren community meeting invites?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if I'm gonna go either, but.
I've gone to one, they're, they're actually pretty neat.
They are interesting, you should probably go to one if you haven't been to one, just cause they are interesting.
Well, they'll feed you too and I mean, it's.
Jeff City wants a slight increase in their 911 budget. Did you guys get copies of the backup? It says it was copied to you this morning.
Yeah, I saw that, I mean, they, ours is a percentage of it, right, to quarter.
25% is what we pay.
So, yeah, unless they're fudging the budget somehow.
Well, we have to make a decision by October 31st if we're gonna get out, otherwise it automatically rolls for another year. Emergency management, there's a state of emergency declared for all that rain, remember the terrible flooding down in Wainsville in that area? So, I don't believe we had any damage whatsoever from that. We received a letter from the Missouri Geographic Alliance asking us to declare, oh, some month to be the National Geography Week and the GIS Day. I don't care.
So what?
You guys, I'll leave this for you guys to look at, if we want, we can talk about it next week. I'm not a big fan of these just resolutions to be resolutions, but you guys can look at it, maybe Melissa has an interest in having it done.
That's what I got. Let's give it to Melissa and see if she wants us to do something with it and if she thinks it's worth.
I think we have to do a GIS Day than a National Geographic Week or whatever.
Let's have a GIS Day instead of Columbus Day, that would make more sense. That's Monday, isn't it?
It is Monday.
Is that a state holiday or county holiday? State, it's not county yet anymore, is it? We gave you all a floating day. We did get it back?
Columbus Day, yeah. I've got two that you say talk to you about, so I'm not gonna talk to you on, while we're in open session.
But I like having the same day.
I entertain a motion to stand in recess.
Wait, what about the, the thing with the resolution on MSP? And I know y'all said neither one of y'all likes doing it. And I asked, crap, who'd I see last night, I was like, well, why did, what, what was the reasoning for City doing it? And they said basically just trying to keep it in front of the governor that they do, it is important, they want to do something.
It's a wasted resolution, it's gonna generate no benefit. I talked to the mayor yesterday, they are pursuing some discussions with the state. I wished him luck, I wished him well, I said, I think MSP is a great asset for our community, I wish we could do something, but the administration is unwilling to do anything and it's, you know.
Well, a resolution costs us nothing to do, it's a piece of paper.
And it gets us nothing.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is why would they do it?
Why do they do a lot of things?
I'm just asking. You know, sometimes the west side of the county just comes up with the genius comments right there.
What does it hurt to send them a, I mean, I can send them a letter myself or.
You know, I'm happy to send the governor a letter venting my frustration, but I'm not sure that helps either. In fact, I'm actually quite certain that.
But if you sit there and do nothing, then.
We're not doing nothing, I mean, in the end, in the end, the issue that has got everybody riled up is the mold in the historic buildings, which has closed the tours and.
So, that's what brought the resolution about all of a sudden.
You know, the CVB was the one who found the mold, they went to the governor's office or they went to the administration and said, hey, you got mold, you need to fix it. And you see the administration's response, which was not, oh, yeah, you're right, we need to fix it, it was, okay, we're shutting down the tours, thanks very much. So, you know, I think the reality of it is that, you know, we offered a couple of years ago, before you came up here, we kind of packaged up the deal where we offered about $7 million to the state to get a long-term lease and they refused to touch it. And when the walls fall down and they actually collapse because of the weather and the wind and everything else, the governor will get what he wants, which is no more having to deal with MSP because nobody will care at that point.
Did they have that meeting Tuesday?
Apparently, they did, I didn't even know they had a meeting Tuesday.
Cause that's why I was trying to find out if they ever did have it, since you said you couldn't make it.
I couldn't make it, there was no other response, like I said, I talked to the mayor yesterday and Eric said.
I couldn't go there, so I didn't worry about it.
They ended up having the meeting, he, he didn't know that it was actually gonna go because the email that we got said, hey, are you guys available this day? And I was not available and then, you know, apparently, they just went ahead and had the meeting. And it was not, nobody from the state was at the meeting, it was, well, I think Kehoe and his office was there. Once, once again, it's the back.
Well.
It's this back channel discussion that seems to lead nowhere. Until the governor himself is sitting at the table, there's nothing that can be done.
Well, we need to figure out what's gonna be done, if anything, because we've got the money sitting there for MSP.
And.
I know we don't have to know tomorrow, but it'd be nice to put a little pressure on them saying, we've got this money, we gotta figure out where that's gonna go if you're not gonna do anything at MSP.
Well, you know, it's, we've reached a point now where barring something really unforeseen, and I mean, really unforeseen. Well, you know, it's, we've reached a point now where barring something really unforeseen, and I mean really unforeseen, we're going to have to repurpose the money. I mean, you're no option. We're not going to build roads when we can't even get on the property. The city is trying to work out some kind of arrangement dealing solely with the historic buildings, using their half of the joint project money. And I, I mean, probably, that's, that's...
That's up to them.
That's up to them. I mean, in the end, you know, it's joint project money, but if they can get some movement in MSP, good for them. Our money's road and bridge money.
Mm-hmm.
We cannot repurpose it for buildings.
I agree.
We promised the voters that money would stay for road and bridge. I mean, I think when we go to the next cycle on, on the road and bridge tax, we should seriously think about on our capital improvements tax, changing the percentages like I suggested last time. And go into something like a seventy-five, ten, ten, or something like that to allow us some money that has flexibility for projects like this. But right now, all we can do with that money is roads because we promised the voters.
Seventy-five, ten, ten?
It's like seventy-five percent obligated for roads, I'm sorry, fifteen percent, fifteen percent for what we're kind of using and then a ten percent that we could, you know, use for special projects or economic development. There's all sorts of projects that come along.
So you'd say using ten percent for possibly buildings over there like cities wanting to do?
Things that are economic development related or special project related because, you know, we can tap our reserves for a short period of time because we've done, I think, a really good job of managing our money. We have, we have reserves. But if you keep tagging the reserves, eventually you don't have the reserves.
I don't know. I'm more apt to keep it on road and bridge stuff.
It's a discussion we should have, like we do each time. And besides, you know, you guys are going to be, you guys are going to be here to administer the next cycle. I will not be here to administer the next cycle.
Well, I just, I'm just not real in favor of a resolution. I just don't think it goes anywhere and it does anything. We can't get Kehoe and Barnes and Bernskatter to get anything done over there now and Nixon's not on board either, so... But anyway, I mean, if you want to do one, but I just...
Well, I was kicking around because I, I tend to agree with you that really that resolution, what does it do, but what does it hurt, on the other hand? So I'll, if I decide to push it, I'll type one up and send it to you and say, hey, I'm going to bring this up and y'all can say, no.
If you really want to move a resolution forward, I'm not going to, I'm not going to vote no to oppose the resolution. I just don't know that there's any benefit and, and it seems to me that if we're going to try to communicate with the state on things that have a significant issue of magnitude, we've got to marshal our resources cautiously and decide when's the point where we can actually make an impact as opposed to just sending a piece of paper over saying, oh, yeah, hey, we're here.
I'd, I'd agree.
I suggest maybe we do is just have the sheriff take all his vehicles and surround the Capitol and not let anybody in or out for a couple of days.
Hey, if, if a private, if a private citizen had that property over there, you know, at what point do we have Department of Health going there and say, you know, it's a safety issue. We're going to shut it down. We're going to start cleaning up and we're going to send you a bill.
We have no jurisdiction on your property.
I know, but that's what I'm saying.
But we do have jurisdiction on the entries and exit points of the property.
It's a shame that they're going to sit there and have blighted property sit there.
Well, have I ever told you my theory about making MSP the local, local government free zone?
We almost made it out here about fifteen minutes ago.
We just agree, we go with the city and we agree that we will no longer provide law enforcement, fire, any other services on MSP that we effectively say, look, what goes on inside those walls, we don't care. If the fire goes, I hope the state can find a fire department to fight it because it's not our problem. If they're not going to play nice with us, I don't know why we're wasting our time and resources protecting their property.
Good idea.
Yeah, sorry, I started that.
I entertain motion to stand in recess?
So moved.
Second.
All those fair say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Thanks, guys. No.
And cut.
I would come back in your office and talk to you about it.
Holy cow. That first hour was torturous.
What's this?
Hate insurance. Why do we even have to talk about it? Hey, visit to me, I'm talking to Randy here.
Greg Watson, I talked about this yesterday. He said if you guys are good with it, he'll pay the money.
I'll get phone calls something. I'm going to forward them to you.
What did he do?
Well, no, they're just the options he's giving.
There's statute.
Right. What did he do?
What brought him his money? Brought him his money from the Recorder's Fund?
Yeah.
Are you breastfeeding?
I didn't even see that. I did not even see that document.
I don't think we want to go there yet, do we?
Well, that's why he said to ask you.
No, it's up to Greg. He is the independent law enforcement officer. I, last time I checked, the duties of the commission do not involve law enforcement.